Good evening. I'd like to call the meeting to order. And we'll start by taking attendance. And I'm going to apologize in advance for my voice and whether or not it lasts the entire night. So, I'm here. John?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
Greg?
I'm here.
Michelle?
Jim?
Yes.
Stephanie?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Lisa I know is not here.
Michael?
Here.
Julie?
Peter?
Thank you.
We have a quorum. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. Are there any questions or comments regarding the items on the consent agenda?
There's a couple of errors on the minutes of June 4, 2018. And I think it's a typo. I'm referring to the -- I can't tell what page this is because I'm not numbered. It's -- oh, there's page -- it's the third page. In the paragraph where I am speaking about AGSTEM at the last sentence, Mr. Kava commented that at this point, there doesn't seem to be any indication of anything falling behind schedules are currently being refined. And schedules are currently being redefined. Actually, it's refined, not redefined. And there's something missing from falling behind schedule. Indication of anything falling behind that would require overtime. Needs to be added there. And I'm not quite sure what I said, but that's what needs to be added for it to be correct.
Yeah, I'm trying to find it.
Oh, it's page 3 of 5. I've got it right here. Where's the -- where's the --
Oh, I got it. Okay. Thank you. So, it's just those two, Greg?
Yes, those two.
Is there any objection to having those changed as reflected by Greg's comments? Hearing none. Then, so the consent agenda items pass, subject to the two corrections that Greg offered. Thank you, Greg. Okay. The Chair's report. I have a few comments that I'd like to defer till we get to the AGSTEM discussion. Other than that, I understand graduation certainly was a spectacular day. From what I heard, I was unfortunately ill and couldn't make it. Thank you, Greg, for stepping in at the last minute like that. I think you saved not only me, but probably a few hundred people from getting deathly ill. I don't need to be shaking hands and passing around whatever I had. But Pat, I'm sure you'll comment or have something on graduation. But it sounded like it was a great day from all accounts. Congratulations to all of our seniors now graduates. So with that, Pat, I'll pass this over to you.
Okay, great. Thank you. Yeah, I'll start with the high school graduation. Class of 2018 made us very, very proud. It was a beautiful day. I want to thank the staff, Mrs. Gallo, Mrs. Ferreira, Mr. Dyer, and everyone else who put it together. What a wonderful morning. The class was really outstanding. Very, very proud of all their accomplishments. I want to thank Don and his crew. The grounds look beautiful, as always. People comment all the time on how beautiful graduation is. So, congratulations to the class of 2018. To continue in the congratulations, we have the eighth grade graduating or being promoted on Thursday evening at 7:00 PM. So, of course, everyone is invited to that. Wednesday night, we have Honk Junior, which is the middle school production. And we're looking forward to that. That's 7:00, and it is free admission, so please try to come to that. I want to congratulate WPS on their Benz Bells Florrette. If you have not had a chance to go see it, please make sure you go in the daylight when it's sunny, because it literally just sparkles and dazzles on the side of that building. I don't think I've ever seen anything more beautiful than that Florrette. So, congratulations. We do have some resignations. As I told you last two weeks ago, Barbara Lenkus is resigning as SRO. And we have retirement Darlene Burr, literacy tutor at WPS. And BJ Hoskins is moving from WPS, and he will be taking over as the TAG STEM teacher. So, that'll be exciting, that all of the kids in all of the schools will have the opportunity to be able to learn from BJ. He really is a great teacher. And this is my last board meeting, so I do want to thank Region 12 for their kindnesses and their allowing me to work with the community and the children. It really has been six years of a wonderful experience. The staff has been outstanding. Working with the different boards have been interesting. But I do want to thank especially Jim and Michelle, who really helped me a lot during my first superintendentcy six years ago. It's hard to believe. And I wish you all well. I'm here for Mrs. Bennet if she needs me. I'm only a phone call or an email away. And I will be in the background, making sure that the AGSTEM program moves forward and that it opens on time. So, maybe I'll start writing some letters to the editor. Who knows? But it's been a pleasure. I wish everyone the best. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Pat. All right. Moving on to IMD State of the Schools. So Kathy, I think you're up first.
She must have been a tall person over here. I have to put it down low for the short people. I'd like to begin by just saying that I, too, was at graduation, and it was a beautiful day. And I congratulate all of the seniors. It is really neat to see the kids, because I remember them when they're really little and short. And then I've got all these tall kids that tower over me, and it's just wonderful to see grown men and women ready to enter the world. So, it was a beautiful day, and Chapag did an outstanding job. Tonight, I was asked to just give a quick update on our multi-grade experience. And I want to begin by saying it has been an amazing journey. We've had a great year. I want to recognize and thank my teaching teams for their tremendous efforts and many accomplishments that they have had this year. I'm also proud of how the teacher teams have developed into very strong partnerships. And it is evident that their work together is very powerful. And, you know, when you begin doing something like this, you don't always know that that team will really mesh together, but those teams are terrific, and they love working together. We look forward to the ongoing work ahead of us as we continue to strengthen our programming. So, our work is never done. We are always looking at it and making adjustments when needed. In thinking about this update, I wanted to honor my teams by sharing their reflection. So, I asked them to share with me their thoughts. So, the K-1-2 team said that the K-1-2 students have made awesome growth and progress. They feel that it has been exciting to have many of the same students again, to pick up where they left off, resulting in little time loss at the beginning of the next school year. So, some of the students were known since we've done a little bit of K-1. Actually, with the multi-age K-1, all of our students have experienced some multi-grade, except for the fifth grade class this year. That was their first experience. The older students are excited to become leaders for their new kindergarten friends, and they had an opportunity to meet them. The K-2 team seamlessly worked well together, which is essential for programming and reaching its fullest potential as a unique collaborative learning environment. The program provides priceless opportunities for sharing of social and academic strengths across the K-1-2 grade levels. There is an extraordinary sense of community and family, and you can sense it when you walk into that environment. And without the limitations of grade level, it promotes flexibility, individuality, and balance during the K-1-2 stage of a child's development. After a successful year's experience, they have reflected and will continue to reflect on ways to make it even better next year. There's always tweaks that we can do. There's even little ones as we went along. The teachers in the 3-4-5 configuration said the following, that there are many opportunities for children to work and develop at their own level on a continuous basis. There's much individual learning -- you know, we use individual learning plans with our students because there's multiple levels. Flexibility of grouping is beyond the normal range of ages and abilities and can benefit those students who are working below or above grade level in certain skills. And this year, they have engaged in multi-grade math, as well as reading and writing this year. So, we did notice that there are some students who are extremely high levels, and through assessments, we can move them forward. We had a little guy in third grade who, after assessing him, he was able to do some fourth and fifth grade math this year. So, it's really tremendous. Students are continuously exposed to reteaching as they listen on and benefit from lessons being given to younger students. This review of the basics reinforces and clarifies a child's understanding, even when they may be working at a more advanced level. Then we also have students who are exposed to pre-teaching, so they're eavesdropping a bit on teaching lessons and discussions with older students. This is very motivating to them. This both prepares and stimulates a younger child's thinking. So, sometimes they like to listen to what they're doing, and even if it's something like fractions at a higher level, and they're doing simpler fractions, they begin to focus in on that, because that's what they want to reach. Social environment. The learning and social atmosphere is cooperative rather than competitive. Pro-social behaviors and expectations are modeled by the older students. The teacher plays a key role in modeling and intentionally teaching these skills, but in a multi-grade classroom, many models are available for the younger students. Older students have opportunities to genuinely help younger students learn. Their teaching helps them clarify their own learning. The cognitive development and self-esteem of both younger and older students has improved, and we've seen that over time. Multi-grade classrooms are less homogeneous than singular grade classrooms. Therefore, differences are the norm and more easily accepted. You can imagine the wide ranges that we have. Children who are academically advanced can easily take part in high-level skills while maintaining interactions with their peers. And all children are expected to work independently at different times during the day. They receive more intentional training to be independent workers. Off-task behaviors diminish as self-discipline and accountability increases. Lengthier time with the same teacher, and we knew this when we were doing the K-1, that having the children the second year has increased trust with that teacher, understanding of expectations, and positive relationships between teacher and students and teacher and parents. Teachers will be able to continue to build upon the knowledge of each child's interests, strengths, and needs over multiple years that they teach the child. Often, especially with high-need students, it takes more than one year for a teacher to see the results of his or her efforts. Having the same child for a number of years allows the teams to reap and enjoy, as we would say, the fruit of their labor. So, it's good for the teacher's morale, and it's good for student success. Lastly, the stability of having the same teacher for a number of years can increase emotional security. Although our work is never done, as I say, we continue to evaluate what we do and to make changes. We build on our successes. We continue to reflect and enhance our programming. We are also mindful of looking for ways to create pathways to Chapag's AGSTEM programming. This year, our students in grades 3 through 5 researched, planned, and designed a garden, which we hope will become part of our Farm-to-Table Lunch Program. Many of our new families have been quite supportive, as well as local constituents. So, we hope that we will be recognized, not only for our multi-grade experience, but also as a strong feeder school for Chapag. So, if you haven't seen our garden, stop by. It's really beautiful. And today, we just picked strawberries, which was really great. So, it's all hands-on deck, and it was really a great project for the students to do. It was really student-driven. So, you know, we're moving along beautifully. It's exciting. I love showcasing it. I love sharing it with folks when they come to visit. I invite you all to come and continue to visit. But our work is never done. It's things that we have to continue to do. We've changed some things about field trips. We're looking at three-year plans, so when children end up leaving after three years, they've hit upon everything that they need to hit upon. There is some blending of some of the curriculum, as well as grade-specific, as well as alternating, you know, what's going to be taught. So, it's exciting. It's a lot of work, but the teachers are loving it, and it's a great sense of community when you walk in. Any questions?
So, are you -- I have two questions. Are you anticipating same staff for next year? Everyone's coming back? That's great.
I am.
Because I know there's a big learning curve in preparing for that.
It's a huge learning curve. And so, yes. Actually, the teams came to me and said, "We love who we're working with," and it's working well.
Good.
So, that's a plus.
That's a huge plus.
It is.
Yeah. I'm sure they've learned a lot this year that they will be able to improve upon. So, that's wonderful. And I don't want to put you on the spot, because you weren't necessarily asked about this, but do you know what your classroom numbers-wise look like next year?
Um, I do a little bit. Our total number right now is 49. This year was 47. We have another student who is supposed to be registering within the next couple of days. That'll make us 50. And I just have been working with three other families who are quite interested in coming aboard. So, I'm seeing an increase in our numbers, and that's great.
That is great.
Yeah.
Are they falling -- distributing evenly?
Yeah. Yeah. My -- so, this past year, we had 16 kindergarteners, and a lot of them came during the summer.
Yeah.
So, this year, right now, I have seven, and I anticipate that I'll have a few more. But I did have students register in different grades. The one that I'm waiting for is going to be a fourth grader. We've had a couple of new third graders, which is great, because there is some numbers that are a little smaller, and those are the numbers that I want to grow.
Great.
So, we'll see.
And how many fifth graders moving out?
Um, I have seven moving out.
Oh, okay. Great. Thank you.
Yeah.
Kathy, I'm not sure how the test results work, if there's a lag time, but have you looked at the standardized test results and how that lines up with multi-age? Have you seen any changes up-down? Or don't you know? Is it too early to say?
It's a little bit early. You know, they're just coming into district now. My hope is that they'll do well. With individualized learning, there's great opportunity to really grow and to become powerful students.
Kathy, how many students currently are tuitioned in at Burnham?
Um, I think we have about -- sorry, I think we have 10.
And I'm assuming all of those are fairly recent, this past year, for example, or some of them more than one year now?
This past year.
This past year.
Yeah.
And when the parents were looking at the program, were they seeing the multi-age, multi-grade as a plus, or something that you really had to work at to convince them that there were some benefits?
No. The families that have come to visit, and I always offer, which I think is great in this district, that we have opportunities for a traditional setting, as well as multi-age. So, I do talk to them about it, but most of the families that come to see me, it's through word of mouth, and that's what they're looking for.
Great. And last question I had for you, speaking of the traditional setting, I'm wondering if you did have any teachers from either Washington primary or booth come to Burnham to observe, to work with their grade colleagues?
Um, this, for the last couple of -- about a month and a half, I think. Mrs. Tierney, who has come back after a long leave, is subbing. So, she's had the opportunity to see what's going on, and she's really excited about what she sees. And she's impressed at where our students are, especially the kindergartners. So, she has had an opportunity to do that. But a lot of our other teachers, such as art, music, PE, the STEM teacher, they've all had the opportunity to see part of that and to participate.
Um, this is probably something you have to think about preparing for, predicting, because it probably hasn't really happened yet, but when you have no transitions between K-2 and you have none between 3 and 5, the only one they're going to have is between 2 and 3. Is that something you have to have special consideration for and preparation for, for the one transition they'll be making between teacher, teaching groups? Is that -- or is that something that's relatively organic as it is?
I don't think we have to do anything really special, because we're so small that everyone knows everybody.
They know everybody, anybody, yeah.
So, for instance, today, the second graders going into third grade did visit the third through fifth configuration. And actually, we separated the fifth graders so that the children can get to know who the entire community will be. And they were really excited, but they go upstairs all the time, so it's not overly different for them. And I do think the transition will be smooth. I do. So, because we do whole-school meetings altogether.
Right.
They know each other. Our older children do things for our younger children, so they kind of know each other.
That old Burnham climate is still there.
Yeah, it's still there.
And when you have students coming from outside, this also, and you probably haven't had too much, like if someone is new to Burnham in fourth grade, and you have cohort that's already been in multi-age, is there a process, or is it just by individual, to ramp a kid up to a multi-age setting that they might not have any experience with?
Alls I can say is that the parents that choose to come from out of district want that kind of a setting.
So, they've been preparing their child.
And they generally come to visit more than once. So, we've had students visiting and spending time in the classroom with peers that they would be with. And so, I think they begin to feel comfortable with it. So, we open our doors and let them come and visit, and let them spend multiple days if they need to, to get adjusted.
Well, that's great.
And usually, we tie a peer, you know, we assign peers to be with the person for the entire day or days.
Hmm. Well, that's great. So, it's also organic and fluid, too. Thank you.
Sure.
Can you remind me what the split is between the two classrooms?
Sure. So, we have K-1 and 2 in the lower configuration, and upstairs, we have grades 3, 4, and 5.
I meant, how many students in each student?
Um, yeah, we have, uh, we have about 21 in the upper grades and a little more than that in the lower grades.
So, in an ideal world, if we keep getting some more of those tuitioned in kids, or, you know, we grow organically when the Three Towns or, you know, Bridgewater, how many more can we fit in either of those classes?
We're always talking about that. Um, right at the moment, we don't have a cutoff, but that'll be a conversation that we'll have to have. I don't think I'm there yet.
Right, right.
But my hope is to get kids spread out among the different grades, because there's some grades that are smaller than others, and that's what I'm beginning to see, which is good. So, you'll hear me when I think it's too many. But right at the moment, you know, when you're looking at a population of 50 students, we hope to bring in a few more. Our building is very small, so we're not going to be enormous, but I would like to see it grow a bit more.
But for the two teachers, that, I mean, it could grow considerably for what they can --
It can grow. Yeah, it can grow. Yes.
Any unanticipated issues or developments that you could bring, use the work on for next year's? Anything unexpected come up this year that?
Well, the one thing that was a little bit unexpected is we certainly noticed that our fifth graders had more of a difficult time with the multi-age, and I think partly because they have never been in a multi-grade configuration, whereas the rest of the students had. They're the only class that never experienced the K-1 configuration. So, it was harder for them to adjust to having multi-grades within that classroom. I think that's going to change from here on in, but we really needed to be sensitive about that. We also are cognizant of the fact that it's important for the fifth grade traditions to keep happening. So, when the fifth grade has the track meet, we will send our students. When, you know, there's visitation, we'll send our students. When they have the art show, or the art, when they take the art trip, they will also do that. So, we are making sure there's some of those traditions stay. Some of the other traditions, such as district-wide field trips for like kindergarten and first grade and second grade, we had to really look closely at that, because we can't have students out all the time. And we want to make sure that students are working together as a community. So, we really changed a little bit of that. And I think I talked about that the last time I was here giving an update. So, some of those things are things that we keep looking at.
Thank you, Kathy. I'm sorry. Go ahead.
I've heard that this has been like just so great from the parents who are in the community and randomly kids at the playground who've said they really love it. And it's been great, particularly, as some of the parents have said, for like the high-flier students that, you know, really have that opportunity, like you said, the third grader who can move up a little bit, maybe where otherwise they weren't able to. What are you seeing with like more of like middle-of-the-road kids? They're adjusting fine, you know, easy to kind of shuffle in between. I mean, they're still, it's not like it's a huge classroom or anything. They're not getting lost in the shuffle or anything. But have you seen any challenges anywhere? Are there things that, you know, that we've struggled with a little bit this year that we plan on tackling for next year?
Well, I think it's highly motivating. So, even if you want to call them the middle-of-the-road students, they're really challenged. When they see other kids doing things that are at a higher level, they, too, want to reach that. So, we're seeing kids much more motivated. And we're also seeing when students need support, we're able to give it to them. So, it's more or less individual learning plans. So, where do you want to go from here? And we can use those assessments to drive the instruction, but also give them that individual learning piece that they need. So, you know, I think all of our students really were challenged and willing to take on that challenge. I think the environment sets it up for that.
Thank you, Kathy. Go ahead.
You said that you had 47 students this past year compared to 49?
Right now, I have 49 registered, yeah.
And the 10 is 10 person.
This past year.
So, top 37 that live in Bridgewater and New York.
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you.
I heard you, though. Okay.
All right.
I thank you so much.
Talk to us about Grit.
No, wasn't that?
Okay. So, good evening, everyone, and thank you for allowing me an opportunity to speak a little bit about WPS and the work we've been doing with Grit.
Okay. So, good evening, everyone, and thank you for allowing me an opportunity to speak a little bit about WPS and the work we've been doing with grit. So last year, when we had the Panorama Survey, the two thousand seventeen teacher and parent survey, we noticed that fifty percent of the questions regarding grit were favorable responses. So that kind of made us a bit curious and wanted us to study a little bit more about grit and to see whether or not, in fact, we as educators can have some sort of influence. So the first thing we kind of did was ask the question, what is grit? And most of the people responded that grit was more about persevering. And so it was kind of unanimous that that was the key. So and as we explored some research and some videos and so forth, we learned that there was more to grit. And we were pleasantly surprised that, in fact, that we could have an influence on grit and grow it in our classrooms. So on that little handout you have there, there were two definitions that we aligned our thinking around. And one was from Angela Duckworth and one from Leila Singuris. And both of them kind of include very similar concepts about perseverance with passion, fortitude with zeal. And so we kind of unpacked those words and were able to kind of gain a greater understanding. We learned that grit is part of a cluster of interpersonal traits and does not stand alone. We learned that grit included internal and external factors that we can influence and that we can grow. So grit from the inside included four ideas, and I thought they were worthy of talking about tonight because they connect to some of the actions that we chose to do this year. Interest, practice, purpose, and hope. Interests are often developed in early years. Early interest exploration is like play, and children revisit interests over and over again. It's the multiple encounters that serve as the foundation for passion development. Most people will gravitate toward a deeper interest later in middle school and beyond. Practice is the deliberate and intentional work to grow an interest. It includes setting those small goals in order to meet a greater, more distant stretch goal. It's persevering through steps and making adjustments along the way. Deliberate practice works when challenges exceed the skill level. It's honing in on the obstacles. It uses feedback to make laser corrections. Interest is one source of passion, but purpose is another. It is having an intention to contribute to the well-being of others. Early interests are very self-oriented. However, gritty people, over time, with deliberate practice, integrate an other-centered approach. Hope is the growth mindset of optimism. It is the belief and expectation that our own efforts can improve our future. It's having the resolve to make tomorrow better. Now externally, parents, coaches, teachers, mentors, friends, and extracurricular experiences play important roles in developing grit. The way we prompt and encourage, the way we model grit can all be potential influences. So after a deeper look at grit, we enhance both the social and academic programs to grow grit from the inside and outside. So some of our initial steps, well, we really have been promoting kindness, but we took a deeper look at kindness this year. And we really spent some time on the kind mind because gritty people also have really strong self-inner control and self-regulatory skills. So we wanted to help our kids develop those skills. So we did a lot of guided imagery with them. And we also did some yoga work with them. We spent a lot of time talking about gratitude, and we had a series of lessons that the whole school engaged in, and some activities for practice. We also worked on growing sort of a stick-to-it-ness philosophy. And we really talked about what it looks like when you're dealing with frustrations. Because we have kids who have arrangements. Some might cry, some might have a little tantrum, some might be angry. So kind of recognizing themselves and figuring out what do I do when I'm frustrated, when things aren't going my way? And then we use the analogy of being stuck in the mud and then giving them some steps to get themselves out of that mud and on the pathway towards success. We also promoted a mindset of optimism. And we really honed in the, on the power of yet. We helped the kids learn that you may not know something right now, but if you set a goal and you practice with intention, that you will achieve what you set yourself out to do. So that's sort of the power of yet. I don't know something yet. Uh, we spent a lot of time cultivating personal interests and choice. Makerspace, as I highlighted before, was a huge success for us in that area. Uh, we have choice in art that also supported that. In the classrooms, the teachers increased opportunities for students to have choice in assignments. We developed a choice day during Green Week, which was really awesome. Uh, they were able to select from seven opportunities. They were all around the science area. And that day, we saw students engaged in different activities throughout the building and outside. Some of it was like learning about wind, um, learning about water energy, uh, learning about beekeeping, et cetera. Afterwards, we did a survey and a hundred percent of the students, a hundred percent, said that they enjoyed making their own choices that day. We also aligned our questioning. Um, and we began to look at the way we asked questions of our students and made sure that we were really guiding personal learning. So really deflecting their questions back at them. We also helped them do a little more with reflection, asking questions like, you know, what is one thing you learned or surprised you about your learning today? Uh, what were you feeling? What's one thing about your work that, excuse me, that you liked? What did you find challenging? Or if someone could watch you work for one minute today, what would you have wanted them to see? So really driving that idea about reflection. And then this idea of challenge exceeding skill, that's really tricky for the classroom. That's really trying to find where the student's challenge mark is and paying attention to see if students are engaged in tasks that are appropriately challenging for them and that could lead to that deliberate practice. So trying to get that cycle in all the time. Set a goal, set your steps, practice, reflect, revise, and keep on doing that. The next steps we're hoping to do is to really articulate grittiness for kids in kid-friendly language. So our first step that we're gonna be working on next year is making kid-friendly awareness of grit. We want to increase our choice learning and hopefully doing two additional choice days. We wanna have a common planning framework for which students can follow. And that really is that self-directed cycle. What do you wanna learn? How are you gonna set out to do that? What process are you gonna take? And what's your reflection? And maybe what audience it is that you're gonna share that with. Um, we want to make sure that we increase mentoring and coaching opportunities by using other students as coaches, using teachers as coaches, and using community members as coaches. We wanna also try to link an interest to an other-centered approach. And like, for example, a lot of students like gardening and trying to not only teach them some techniques around gardening and about growing, but also like what do plants do for others, you know, and trying to think about like, could, could plants be aesthetically important to people as well? And I know we have a partnership with the Danbury's Women's Group and, um, you know, they often tell us that they take on families and their place is sometimes not really aesthetically nice for them in terms of their shelter area. And so they're just kind of blank walls. And so we happened to recently just draw pictures for their clients. But this might be an opportunity to not only learn about grow, growing plants, but also planting them and, you know, bringing these plants for others to appreciate. The other thing we wanna look at is to explore the school-wide enrichment model. It was cited in a lot of the research. And we just wanna take a look at that. It's the Ranzilli model from Yukon. Um, and it came out of the talented and gifted approach, but it's a model that is for school-wide talent enrichment. And so we wanna take a look at that and see if there's some components of that that we can kind of bring into our school to help us with this. So as you can see, grit is more than just persevering. Um, it has different layers, all worthy of attention. At WPS, we're hoping to sort of shape the culture of the students, staff, and parent community to value and grow grittiness so that we can actually own it. The quote at the bottom of your sheet of the handout encompasses this idea. Culture has the power to shape our identity. Over time and under the right circumstances, the norms and values of the group to which we belong be, actually become our own. We internalize them, we carry them with us. The way we do things around here and why eventually becomes the way I do things and why. And that's from Angela Duckworth. And her point is that if you wanna be grittier, surround yourself by gritty people. So that's the culture we want to establish. Um, so basically, that's where we are with that. We're looking forward to another strong year in developing that. So any questions or comments?
Obviously, I'm not going to ask, we just heard from two, the, the two elementary school principals. I'm obviously not gonna ask you about any multi-age plans because you're not doing that. But I would have to ask, is there a grit development process going on at Booth and Burnham too? And is it sufficiently similar that you can just say what she said?
Greg?
Yeah, I have a few questions. Can you tell me, can you remind me again of what, what kind mind is?
So kind mind is preparing your mind for the acts of kindness. So we talk about settling all the swirling thoughts in your head that sometimes can make you anxious or worried or frustrated. And so we're teaching the kids to just calm themselves so they can prepare themselves for kindness. It's really a hard task, but it is quite beautiful.
Right, but what does that have to do with grit?
Well, grit is around self-control and self-regulation. So underlying grit is the other characteristic of being able to self-regulate. Because when you can self-regulate your emotions and your feelings and frustrations around learning challenging things, you're more apt to set plans and do the follow-through, which makes the grittiness happen.
And I guess I, for some reason, I'm just not getting, it's not coming through to me. When I think of grit, I think of people who are tough. They have resolve. They're gonna keep moving forward. They're not gonna be deterred. I mean, yeah, you have to control yourself to, to accomplish that. But I don't understand what kind mind has to do with it at all. It's the exact opposite. If, if you, if you get yourself in a nice, kind gratitude arrangement in mind, that doesn't put you in a position to be gritty. You wanna be gritty, you wanna be tough. You wanna toughen these kids up. You wanna get them to the point where they don't, they don't look at obstacles as things they can't overcome. They look at, how do I overcome them? That's why I don't, I, I think it's, it's, it seems to me to be confusing. I mean, maybe I don't get it, but I'm confused.
Well, foundational, well, let's look at the idea that grittiness, grit doesn't stand alone. It stands within a cluster of interpersonal attributes. So if you look at the upper right-hand corner, I kind of listed them. And what makes up sort of that will cluster is that grit, self-control, performance character, and self-management character. And so they are foundational skills for grittiness. And so, you know, when you start researching it, they give you examples of people, like sort of models of grittiness. And so you'll find that people who would be considered models of grittiness actually do, are they, you might consider them tough, right? But you also will consider them very open-minded. They're optimistic. And optimism comes with that kind mind. That's a trait within. So you can't, you can't go about, I think what I'm hearing you say is that can you be kind and tough at the same time and still be gritty? So I think that's an important kind of question.
That, that's not actually what I was saying. What I was trying to say was, is that when, when you take children and you tell them, we want you to be kind now, and we want you to be tough now. I mean, if I were the kid, I would be flummoxed. I would be confused. It doesn't make any sense. The kinds of things you think about when you're thinking about being kind are not the kind of things you think about when you're thinking about being, being tough.
Right.
Being hard, possessing fortitude, being brave. Uh, somehow kindness doesn't, the kind of thoughts about kindness would seem to be to dissipate the thoughts about being hard, tough, and ready.
Right.
And that's why I don't get this. And I, I'm telling you, if people hear this and they say, what are these educators talking about? This is, this doesn't make any sense.
So, so we do, we support the idea of being collaborative through kindness. And so you can still advance yourself without being mean. And toughness does not mean that you lack kindness. So I think we're, we're encouraging students to, to listen to feedback, to see others as resources, to use information to advance your passion. That's what we're looking at. And remember that ultimately, one of the aspects of being highly gritty is connecting your passion for the good of others. And I don't necessarily think that you, you can help kids learn what that connection is if you don't help them learn how to be kind to others.
I agree that there's value in being kind to others, and I don't think you, gritty people can be kind to others. There's not a, I, I don't, I don't see that as a fundamental thing. What I'm trying to figure out is you're trying to introduce the kids to being grit, to being gritty. And if you're gonna be gritty, sometimes you gotta go it alone. And it doesn't always fit into collaboration. So here's the question. You say, let's be kind, let's collaborate. Now I want you to be tough. And if I'm a kid, I've gotta be confused. Or maybe I've forgotten how kids think, but.
I guess I never, I don't think we ever use the word tough with the kids. I think what we're using is to be kind and to, because that helps with the collaboration and also helps with the extension of giving your talents to make a difference in the world. The piece that we say to them is to be persistent, set a, set a goal, set a plan, and do the follow-through and then reflect. That's the grittiness that we're expressing to them.
Well, it, it, it might be that those are all fine characters, but what you're not talking, what you're talking about is not grit. I mean, there's toughness, hardness, resolve in grit. You can call something else grit, but it's not grit. And I just, I, I'm thinking this program is fundamentally confused. I don't understand it, and it doesn't make any sense. And, 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 and it seems like we've appropriated a term because it sounds cool. And we've thrown it on here, and we've given it a whole new meaning. And then we present it to the kids, and the kids walk around and say, well, you know, I'm, I'm got, got grit. Well, how do you have grit? Well, today I was very kind to people. Well, how did that advance your goal? Well, you know, I don't know. And, and so the, that's what I'm hearing here. And I could be wrong, but that's what I'm, that's why I don't understand.
Yeah.
I'm gonna suggest we, I'm gonna suggest we, we, we move on. Because we have, we have a philosophical disagreement perhaps that could last the rest of, I don't know.
But you know what? I wanna say it's a great one to have.
It's, it's a great conversation.
Because I think when the staff began to do the research, we really thought grit was something other. And we went right to the guru. And Angela Duckworth is the guru to look at. If you're gonna look at grit, you wanna go there. And it helped change our way of thinking. And because of that, we looked at our purpose in a different way. So I guess I would invite you to kind of explore some of those researches, the resources out there because it really has changed our view on it as well.
So I'm just trying to figure out, is Greg being kind or in your tough, or is he being tough and you're kind?
I'm definitely being, how's that one?
There's some grit going on here. So with, with that, I, I, Greg, great, great debate. Uh, and, you know, and it's, I'd like to continue, but unfortunately, we've gotta finish with the agenda.
Okay, so we're all good. Thank you.
I'm gonna ask somebody else, if somebody else has a question. Michelle? Uh, no.
No, I didn't have a question.
Oh, okay. All right, let's move on. Ally?
Hi. Uh, I'm so excited to be back to talk to you about something we talked about in January. And we talked about our eighteen to twenty-one program that we were developing. I brought along a friend tonight. This is Betsy O'Neil. She is a special education teacher here at Chapag. Uh, she also has been our school-to-work coordinator and transition specialist for the last six years in the district. So while the program that we're starting will be new, this is not new work. Betsy has been doing this work with our students here in the high school. She additionally, you know, all of our juniors take the opportunity to have a job shadow experience. Many of our students with special needs, because of Betsy, have five or six of them before they graduate, maybe upwards of ten. Uh, many of our students that have special needs have also had work experiences because Betsy has worked with local businesses to secure placements, work experience, opportunities for our students. So Betsy has been my partner in this work this year, and I'm just very excited to tell you where we've been in the last couple months. Betsy will hand out our folders for you tonight. So the first thing was, uh, we finally, we came up with a name. And our name for our eighteen So the first thing was, we finally, we came up with a name, and our name for our 18 to 21-year-old program is Shapog Valley Partnership. We didn't want to call it Shapog Valley Program because we wanted to highlight the, the partnership and the relationships that we're building in the community with local businesses. So we've shared a few things in the binder, or in the folder. On the left-hand side, you'll see a brochure that we have that outlines some goals for the program, outline of services that the program provides, and we've shared this with our families for the students that will be joining us in the upcoming year. You'll notice behind the brochure, there's a handout that Betsy has used for the last five years with local businesses to share the reason that we're doing the work, that, that paid employment and employment is really, it's about satisfaction in life. It's about feeling needed and a part of something. And so Betsy has shared that handout, and that purely is given to businesses, not necessarily to families, so they understand why we want to have our students in the work sites. So we shared that as well. That's something that's been handed out for years while Betsy has been getting jobs for our students. On the right-hand side of the folder, you'll see just some very beginning information that we've shared with the families who will be joining us in the fall. Start times, end times, and the importance of being at school on time, the importance of not having appointments because a lot of our day will be spent out in the community, and just the trickiness that comes along with that. You'll also notice additionally after that is our school calendar, because the Shapog Valley Partnership will work on the school calendar. After that, you'll notice a draft schedule. And essentially, what you'll see is three days of work experiences for our students. So Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Thursdays, our students will be out in community jobs. They'll also have a fitness, a piece of their day will be fitness as well on those days. Mondays and Fridays are a little bit different. They'll be spent in the community. Monday will be the day that we do our banking. It'll be the day that we do shopping. They'll be cooking themselves lunch on that day. And we have been lucky enough, Betsy has been able to work with Pete at the Legion, so that we have a wonderful kitchen to use for our students every Monday. Fridays, we'll spend in the community, visiting local, local community sites, maybe taking a trip to a restaurant, maybe visiting locations outside of the community. So truly, our program will be three days of work and two days of independent living, recreational, leisure kind of skills to support our students' goals moving forward. Additionally, on the right side, at the very back end, you'll see what our students, a lot of our high school students have been using a version of this when they go out to work. It is a work-based learning agreement that shares what the students will be doing, what the family should be doing. And so this year's was edited a little bit for this new group. In the past, our students have been stipended for their work because it is a learning experience, and they've received a stipend of $6 an hour for their work while they've been on the job learning. This group at the 18 to 21-year-old program will be receiving minimum wage services because for the last, or minimum wage rates because for the last three to four years, they've been having many, many experiences at the stipend level. So we wanted to show them that minimum wage work is the goal of what we want to get, at least, moving forward and, and when they're graduating from our program at 21. So this past Monday, Betsy and I were excited to meet our students, our new trailblazers that are starting this program with us, along with their families, and we were able to visit the hub site where Betsy has started to move some of her materials down. And we were able to have the parents and the students come in and see the location. We were also able to talk, take a walk around the depot, visit the Legion to see the kitchen, take a look at the surrounding community sites that we'll be using to build this program. So the bank that we'll be using, the market, the, the post office and such. So we got to take a tour of Washington Depot with the families and get them ready and excited for what awaits next year. So that's where we are with the program that we shared with you in January. And Betsy has done an amazing job to get this off the ground and running as much of, as time, as the year progressed and time sort of pulled me away from a little bit of this, she has taken on a lead role in this, and really will, really excited that Betsy will be leading us down in the depot with our new program. Any questions?
Thank you for your enthusiasm. It sounds like it's well-deserved. It sounds like it's going to be a great program.
Very excited for them.
Yeah.
Very excited for the students.
I'm, I'm wondering what kind of a reception you've gotten from the business community in Washington Depot?
Yes, they have been wonderful. And it's not just in the depot. It's, I go to Milford, and I go out into Preston, and Michelle can vouch for that. Local, anything, you know? We want to get the kids out into whatever area that they really like. One of our students, for example, loves stocking shelves. So what did we do? I got him into Big Y, and he goes there, and he stock shelves. So we try to focus on what their interests are. So, but the, but the depot has been fabulous.
And what, what kind of numbers of, of students are we looking at this year?
Just two this year.
We have two.
Two?
We're starting the program with two this year, with the hope of offering it to, probably offering it to three more students next year. But you do need to understand that sometimes students at 18 choose that, choose that they're no longer going to participate in the program. And so we anticipate offering it to three students and, and hope that all three will take it, so that additionally, next year will be a group of five. But we'll see.
Great.
I just wondered if you could clarify to the board, because I was ignorant as to who actually is eligible for this program, just so everybody knows.
So it, eligibility is really determined out of the PPT team. And so for several of our students right now, that is, the PPT team meets and determines, so the planning and placement team meets yearly to talk about programming. There, the plan that comes, that, that we develop through that really is sort of the indicator of what will happen moving forward. So several of our students, through the PPT process, their goal, when we talk to them at their meeting, is to go on to college. And so we know we're going in that direction. Several students, they have a goal that they want to get straight out to work, so we know we're going in that direction. Some students will need much more practice with independent living, vocational, work skills, and life skills. So a lot of our students that are on that path, that might have the most needs, are generally who we are guiding towards that program. But that doesn't, it's really based on an individual basis. But most of our students who have, the people we are guiding to this program are the students who have sort of the three needs: independent living, vocational, and those transitional kind of pieces to, to fill in. Yes?
I know this has a lot to do with state mandates, but are these students, they are, have graduated from Shapog?
So yes and no. So they haven't officially graduated and received a diploma. They've met their academic requirements. And so when you meet your academic requirements, and we're going to stay on to a program, whether it be one extra year, two extra years, or till 21, we give the students, they participate in graduation, they are a part of the senior class for all activities, but what they receive is different than all the other seniors that are leaving us and graduating. They receive a certificate of completion. And so that allows us, as a region, to continue to support them. Once students take diplomas from the region, they are no longer eligible for special education because upon high school graduation, you exit from special education. So the students that do stay on with us, they have completed all their coursework, they will walk through graduation, they'll receive a certificate of completion, not a diploma. They will receive their diploma when they complete however many years the PPT team has determined is required. Sure.
Thank you very much, Ally. Karen?
Good evening. One of the things that I enjoy the most about my job is that on a pretty much daily basis, I get to brag about all the things that are happening in our school system. And this past year was no exception. We had quite a bit of things to be proud, proud of. As you've heard me say many times, Region 12 has absolutely amazing schools. We have great students, great staff. We have some unbelievable achievements that happen every year. So when we sat down with the administrative team to try to figure out how to condense all that and not talk all night, we found that the best way to do that was to have each of them highlight one thing, and then Colin and I worked together to put together a three-minute video. Short, to the point, but it's going to share with you some of the great things that are happening, or that actually have happened.
2017 and '18 was a banner year for Region 12 schools. Booth, Burnham, and Washington Primary excelled with a number of new initiatives this year. Students took an innovative look at pre-engineering and the next-generation science standards through Project Lead the Way, which engaged students' natural curiosity through problem-solving. A focus on growth mindset and grit helped our students to discover new ways of thinking about how their brains learn through challenge and taking risks. Learning takes hard work, so students mastered strategies to help persevere when things get tough, knowing that mistakes are part of the learning process. The launch of Maker Spaces took our students from consumers to makers and producers based on personal interests and choice. Makers were encouraged to engage in deliberate practice and become purposeful learners who connected their experiences with the community at large. The Burnham School entered an exciting stage with their multi-age classrooms, and has had great success with developing innovative curriculum and community across the ages. Shapog Valley School's primary focus is to ensure all students have a plan for life after high school. This involves a strong, rigorous curriculum, but also exposes students to extracurricular opportunities and interests to broaden their horizons. Our outstanding performing arts program produced 13 Halo Award nominations this year, while the music program continued to provide exceptional opportunities for students to perform in live concerts, including the Northern Regional Music Festival. Excellence in the fine arts were especially notable this year for Shapog students who submitted their work to professional juried and non-juried shows. Two such exemplary students were Maya Misana, who was named a National Silver Medalist at the Scholastic Art Awards, and Arturo Ortega, who was awarded Best in Drawing at the Hunt Hill Farm Emerging Artists exhibit. As we prepare our students to live and work in a modern world, digital literacy and tools are incorporated into the curriculum at all levels. The district celebrated International Digital Learning Day this year by producing video vignettes highlighting various digital experiences to share with our community through our web, television, and social media channels. Shapog Valley School takes a proactive stance on preparing students for college and career readiness. Our nationally-recognized counseling department holds a number of events designed to prepare students to apply and enter the college of their choice. This year, they held a college fair, financial aid night, and an early college planning night, which helped juniors get started on the process early. They also conduct breakfast and lunch discussions with students from all grades. Students were offered experiences this year that encourage active citizenship, which included representing the prestigious country of France at the Harvard Model United Nations. The World Affairs Forum hosted special guest Ambassador William Lures and addressed the topic of denuclearization of Iran. Students at Shapog participated in a number of internships and work experiences to help provide a glimpse into careers available to them. One exciting example were students in the digital media program that participated in Video Production Night at Fenway Park in Boston to explore careers in the field. All of our schools have a strong focus on connecting our students with the larger community. This happens at the elementary level through such events as the pie feast, senior luncheon, and harvest gathering, which invites community members to celebrate the seasons with our students. Minds in Motion was a multi-community event that brought students from as far away as Greenwich to participate in a day of learning, technology, and creativity within the Shapog classrooms that showcased our school. The tradition of senior projects at Shapog included many that had direct impact on the community, such as Brandon Chaney's work with the Washington First Responders, and McCrebs' Spartan Twilight Relay races, and Michelle Randall's performance to raise money for Ann's Place. To showcase the value of experiences with our community, a series of senior project spotlight videos were created. Region 12 Schools: Creating Opportunities for the Future.
So I hope that this short, it was four minutes, sorry, I lied. But it was really hard for us to get it down to four minutes. If any of you, I know some of you do, follow us on any of our social media platforms, we actually have quite a bit of following, and it is very interesting to me how every day I have to pick and choose what goes up, because we have so much happening in the district. I also want to let you know that we're in the process of completely throwing out and rebuilding the website, which is why you haven't seen as much going up on the website. That's going to be launched in July. So we've been working really hard at that, and this will be one of the videos that we actually promote up on the site. So thank you for letting me share. Do you have any questions? Sorry, Michelle.
I'm excited about the website redesign. Can you tell me, are you switching?
Vendors.
Thank you. Yeah, like a platform.
Totally new vendor. Totally new vendor. It's much more, what, what we were really looking for was to move towards a more visual, as opposed to text-heavy site. And I think that we've, we've gotten a good, we have a good vendor. We're using Final Site. It's just a massive undertaking to take everything and convert it over to the new site, because there is a lot of the content that we need to retain. All of the academics work that I worked with Lori Ferreira on, that is a huge section. Not to mention, you know, you guys take up a lot of site on the website, too. There's a lot in that Board of Ed section. So that's really what I'm going to be focusing on over the summer. One of the things we'll be focusing on over the summer.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right. So we'll move into the next item on the agenda, which is an AgSTEM update and discussion. And before you get going, Pat, you can hand them out. I want to...
Oh, okay, yeah.
Say something. So, um... This, this is rather, I'll say, coincident in that, you know, we had periodically been updating and looking at the numbers for the program, well, I guess, ever since we started down this path. And we've been getting constant updates from, or each, I should say, each board meeting, we've been getting updates from Bob on where we are in terms of how much money's been spent, from Greg, program, schedule, design, et cetera. And we had not had a look at what the enrollment figures look like now that we've got another year in the books, or I should say, Nonowog has another year in the books, to be able to look at that, as well as, there's an update on interest rates. So we're at about the time, so we were thinking anyway, towards the end of the year, that we would do exactly what we're doing now, especially as we head into, I mean, pretty soon, you know, we're going to start putting shovels in the ground. You know, the school year's almost out. We'll start demolition for the science labs here momentarily. So it's a good time to sort of say, take another snapshot and say, where are we with this program, and as we, as we continue to progress it. At the same time, we, I should say, I'll say, we got a letter, the Board of Ed, addressed to myself and to, to Pat, sent to us from a number of signatures, but represented by Mr. Wainwright. I shared that with the board when I did receive it. It was a letter, and I'll summarize it, that represented signatures, signatures from Bridgewater, Washington, and New Preston, totaling 180 signatures on, that were associated with this letter. And the letter asks that we do exactly what we're doing, which is to provide an update on the information that I mentioned, as well as requesting a second refer, the petition that, that this letter represents, requesting a second referendum on the same question we went to referendum with, what, about 18 or so months ago? And the reasons for that. So let me state that, there's a couple of things here that are more, I'll say, technical in, in nature. First off, unlike the local towns, that if petitioned by a certain number of residents can be compelled to take certain actions. That is true with the, with the, with our three individual towns. That is true with our three individual towns. However, there is nothing that would compel the board to take any action regardless of the number of signatures that would be assigned to something. So we could have one, or we could have 100% of our residents, it would be certainly worth considering. I'm not trying to, I don't want to get the message confused here, but it doesn't compel us to necessarily do anything. So, we can't be compelled to have a public hearing, we can't be compelled to even put it on an agenda, nor can we be compelled to go to referendum. That's the first technical point. The second technical point, after speaking with Region 12's council, they do not believe we have legal authority to go to referendum on the same question. It's been tried, there's precedent, and the precedent always goes against trying to have a referendum on the same question twice. So, even that request is not within the authority of the board to act on that request, even if we wanted to. So, that can't be a possibility. So I will write back to Mr. Wainwright on behalf of the board with, one, we are updating the information here tonight, as requested. Two, we're not going to have a public hearing, and we can't entertain the question of going back to referendum. It is completely within the board's authority to decide the future of this project at this point. I think we all know that, I think we've talked about that a number of times, but it begins and ends with us as a body. So I just wanted to make that clear. It might not satisfy some people, but it is what it is. So I wanted to just get that out of the way, not to dismiss it or dispense of it, but to just make it clear that the board did receive the letter, we did give it careful consideration, and this is the outcome of that. So, Alan?
Yeah, just a point of order, there's a Section 11 alluded to here, which didn't make it, and I know I've seen that, because it came out separately. Is there an issue with editing that, or is it just omitted? Can we whip up a copy and print it out and add it to everyone's packet?
Bob, do you have a copy of the-
You just made copies of it?
I emailed it to everybody, and then I didn't, I forgot to attach it to the, it was the debt analysis. Does anybody?
Yeah.
Yeah, if you have a copy, then you-
Get a copy, thank you for remembering.
Yeah. While you're doing that-
The oversight. You got it, Bob?
While you're doing that, Pat, let me, I'll just wrap, I'll just finish what I'm doing.
It's one page.
Yeah, it's just one page.
Colin, is this it?
Yeah.
Yeah, come get this one. Makes you have the right one. This is it.
Mr. Wainwright also sent the board, suggested-
Yes, send it to everybody.
-alternative course that I also shared with the board, alternative course of action to this program. I think, again, it's, this is, it's up to the will of the board and what it wants to do next. But I will, if you've looked at it, I'll say that a number of things are, that are on here, we're actually doing. We are renovating the science labs, we are hiring STEM teachers, and we're offering more AP courses. So these are not in conflict with AgSTEM, they're not in lieu of AgSTEM, we're doing this as well. And his other suggestion here was to continue to attract more Sherman students, and I believe, I don't think there's anybody here at the board would just, would say that that is not a lofty objective, to continue to try to attract more Sherman students. In fact, I would go as far as saying is, we'll take them all. But I don't believe Sherman would necessarily sit back and agree with that, for a number of reasons, but I think that's our attitude, is we'll take, we'll take all of Sherman if Sherman will have us. So, I wanted to read that in, because I think it's important, it took the time to write to us, I wanted to answer him back in a formal way, and agree with a number of his points. So with that, Pat, unless there are any questions regarding the letter we did receive, I'm going to give the floor to Pat, and we can continue on.
These are the best, this is the best information I could get for people in the last two weeks. It's just very, very busy, and to get other districts on the phone, it's just, it's very difficult. So, and thank you, Alan, for letting me know. I did forget to attach, because it wasn't ready when I originally did it. So you're all getting the last handout, which is number 11 on page two of the table and contents. So, I'm going to start with just the AgSTEM pathways as a reminder. Teresa DeBrito went into this in great detail a couple of months ago, and we do have it on the web, but there are going to be four pathways in the Agri-science Academy. That does not mean that it cannot expand to the other pathways as the program grows, but to start it, in the business model of 139 kids, we did reduce it to four pathways. So the first one is the study of plant systems. Not going to read everything there, you all have it in front of you. Next is the study of animal systems. The third is the study of food products and processing systems. And the last is the study of power, structure, and technical systems. And so those are the pathways that the kids can study. Now, when the kids are in middle school, part of our program is to have exploratory sessions with the kids, so that they can learn about the different pathways before they get to Chappagh. Okay, so that's, those are the pathways. Now when we get to the data, I'm on page four, they're numbered on the bottom, it's, that's how I'm going by it. Okay. So basically, the application data, this is, this is the latest data that we have, okay? Where it says that the last column, 2017, 2018, those are the kids who applied for Nanowog for the fall of 2018. Okay? We could not get for 2019 at this point, okay? I put in a couple of calls, and it just, I just could not get it at this point. So, these are the kids that are there now. I'm hoping in the next months, as things settle down, unfortunately, in Region 14, their superintendent is also leaving, so it's very difficult. Harold Makin at the State, who is in charge of the science and the agri-science for the State, was away for a couple of weeks, so it's really been difficult. So we're just going to really have to deal with these numbers right now. These are the application numbers. And just so you know, as a reminder, students in the fall in eighth grade, okay? So this coming fall in the eighth grade, our new agri-science teacher, who is going to be hired this week, will go with Mrs. Gallo, Mrs. Bennett, Mrs. Files, whoever you decide the team will be, and you will go to each school, and you will try to recruit for this program. So you'll show the videos, you'll show Chappagh, you'll have an open house, you'll do all these exciting things to get kids excited about the new program. And then they apply. Now, you've seen the application, I don't have it here, but in the future, we can get it for you again. The application is not, I want to get in, I'm applying, I'm in. Students apply, and then they are blind ranked. So what does that mean, blind? It means, yes, they're going to have an interview, which of course is not blind, but the information's blind. They're going to be ranked on their resume, on their community service, on their attendance, on their discipline, all of those things, and also on their desire to be in an agri-science program, okay? And then they're going to be ranked, and then, if the board decides they're going to take 25 kids, you are going to take the top 25 kids that are ranked, and then everyone else is put on a wait list. Now unfortunately, the wait list is the area that people get fuzzy about, because it is fuzzy. Because, for example, if I'm from Chappagh and I've applied, and I'm on the wait list, I'm still in Chappagh. Okay? Chappagh really only keeps track of the kids who get in and who are transferring out to Nanowog. So the wait list, it's hard to say exactly how many kids are on the wait list. What you can see from the application data of the kids that started in 2018, from our area, if you did not include Bethel, there were 55 kids who applied. Now, yes, that's 23 from Danbury, that's a lot from Danbury, but I can tell you, and I think this is something that the board needs to pursue, Danbury is looking for seats. They're looking for places to put their kids, okay? The superintendent has sent out a letter asking, does anybody have a building to rent to him? So he is looking for seats. So they are primed to send more kids. So you just really have to pursue that in a positive way. Sherman, we are just finishing up the bus contract with Sherman for the kids who tuition in. Sherman would like us to accept all of the kids who want to come to the agri-science program. We literally had to say, whoa, 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 absolutely we want them, but they have to be qualified. So we have to put some parameters, because that's what we explain to everyone. You can't just come, you have to have the qualifications. Okay? So, I am, I am very comfortable with the application data, although I know some people are not. The other thing that I did get sent to the board, I don't know if you read it, but there was an article in the Republican American on 6/13 that talked about Region 14, and, you know, it says, the last sentence, "Each year, there are hundreds of applicants for a small number of program spots." This program is probably one of the most exciting things that is happening in the state. I hear it from people all the time, I hear it from kids, I hear it from parents, I hear it from educators. Very excited about the Chappagh agri-science program. So I think as long as you market it, you get out there, you're not going to have a problem attracting students. So now, page five is the longitudinal enrollment view. Again, these are the kids who are now 2017, 18, who are in Nanowog. Okay? And again, it's, these numbers you've seen before. Now, the freshman enrollments, again, if we don't include Bethel, that's 20, only 22 kids. And I use the word "only" because, remember on the page before, there were 55 kids. So that means 33 of those kids were waitlisted, because they have such a large enrollment from the other, what is it, 13 or 14 towns? Okay? So, we will not waitlist as many kids, because we will keep going down the list of the kids who apply to be in the program. So, you know, although it says 22, you know, I can understand why that would be difficult for people. The other piece there is that they only gave us one, zero kids this year from Sherman. The other thing that I think the board needs to do is they need to revisit Bethel. Bethel said that they would seriously consider it once the state approved the money and we had the shovel in the ground. Well, that's going to happen now. So, and I know firsthand of families of kids who want to come and who are going to be very upset if Bethel doesn't send their kids to Chappagh. The other thing that I want to bring to your attention from someone who is in the area, Chappagh is a very different school than Nanowog. When kids go from a school like Sherman or Chappagh to Nanowog, they're leaving a very small school with a lot of personalized learning and attention, and going into a very large, larger high school, I don't want to say very large, but almost 1,000 kids. Okay? So that's a very different scenario for an eighth grader. I also will tell you that in a small school like Chappagh, kids think twice before leaving and going to Nanowog, because they don't want to leave their friends. They've been with the kids, you know, a lot of them since they've been in kindergarten. So I think you'll get a lot more of our kids who want to go into the program. The next number is the total enrollments. Okay? So you'll see, again, over the four years now, they have 72 kids. And yes, that, again, that looks low, but remember, every year, they're waitlisting almost 30 kids from this region that we won't be doing. And then you have the three-year average. Now, the only district that has given us a cap is Danbury, which I think they will raise their cap. I don't have any doubts about that, and I will tell you that they are over their cap already at Nanowog, because they need seats for these kids. Okay? So, no one else has a cap. New Fairfield superintendent wrote on her letter that the three-year average is three, but she didn't say that there wasn't a cap. And in everybody's letter, I didn't make copies of everyone, but basically, what they have signed is, just, "The Brookfield Public School District agrees to send students who are interested in attending agri-science programs to Chappagh Regional School District 12, beginning the fall of 2018," we're a year, so it's 2019, "and thus are willing to increase the number they send above their three-year average they currently support if the students are interested in the program." So you have a letter from each school district willing to send above their three-year average. So I really believe we're in very good shape. As I said, it's very difficult to get more specific numbers this time of year. I think in September, October, when the kids arrive again, October 1st is the day that the state uses, so I think that's a date that we should use, to reestablish a new column in these numbers. So with that said now, I am going to ask Bob, oh, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Before we get over to the models, I have, I have a view of the enrollment that I think answers a number of questions as well that have been asked over the course of the last year or so, about the fidelity of the numbers, where the numbers come from, excuse me. And it leads basically to, you know, the same conclusion, that there's opportunity here, but that the numbers that we're getting from the sending towns, Danbury did increase their cap, it was at 15 when we started, we just got them to agree to increase it to 25, 22, 25, there's a little, but I think it's going to be 25 for planning purposes. And in the future, we don't know whether or not they'll continue to relax that as we go, that'll be something we'll have to just see as time progresses. But I wanted to share this with the board, Pat, to supplement what you've done. So, Alan, could you do me a favor? Send me that one. I don't know how many we got.
You have it?
Yeah. Someplace. No, I have it someplace.
Yeah, it's this-
No, no, it's okay. It's probably stapled to Ed's thing here. All right, I'll use this one. No color copies. It's too bad. Colors were nice. I look, you look at the numbers, I mean, you can look at the numbers 100 different ways, but if you look, you look at base enrollment, and you look at, two ways, looking at the past four years, and taking the actuals from the past four years, or taking this past year, and multiplying that effectively by four, and saying, if this year, if this year that just completed was more of an indication of what our future is going to look like versus the past four years. So I went in two different ways. They're not that far off. What you came, what you come up with is a base enrollment of anywhere between 105 to 112 students, and the subsequent charts detail that out. It leaves us with a gap of 15 to 22 students total enrollment. So total enrollment, again, means in any given year across grades nine to 12. So that's really what still needs to be found. And some of the items that Pat talked about are the things we need to look at. I mean, we have some advantages, we need to, we need to play to those advantages, we need to have a program of distinction that people want to come to, et cetera, we've talked about this. There are other ways to increase, to get, I'll say, if you, if you look at the details here, there's attrition at each one of the stages in the funnel where we're losing kids who are accepted that don't enroll, kids who enroll but don't finish the program. And that, that's about 35% in all. If you could do anything to improve those numbers or increase the top of the funnel, that's one way you can naturally start to fill your gap. Of course, if Danbury were to relax their cap entirely, then you've got a clear path to filling up this gap pretty quickly. You know, so it's, it's, like most things, it's not going to be one thing that's going to fix this, it's going to be a number of things. And you have to play as though everything else is not going to work. Right? So you've really got to press on each one of these, and then you'll get some success here and there and some success more or less, but when you put them together, that's how you build a plan and you play to win. And that's what we'll be working on next year. So, I mean, just, I'm just going to walk you through the waterfall chart on page two. Again, there's a lot of detail that people have been asking about whether or not we've been looking at the numbers and how we should be looking at the numbers, et cetera, and this is, this is how we are looking at the numbers. So if you look at this left to right, the applications over the past four years total 172, of which 33 of them were waitlisted. And that waitlist was adjusted for kids who were originally waitlisted and then taken off the waitlist and enrolled. So that's a net or an adjusted waitlist number. The Danbury waitlist totals 27. So what you then have is you have 112 students who are accepted into the program, and then the attrition kicks in, and you lose 40 of them. So our enrolled class right now is 72, of which Region 12 has eight students in that class. So that's our starting point. Now, as we start to build back up, we know we're going to add more kids from our own school, and that's the first bucket there of 12. Then there's the waitlist, the infamous waitlist. So if you look at the pie graph above, the waitlist, it breaks down the waitlist and says of the 33, that 33, even if you pull them all in, is still going to be subject to attrition. There's that, those kids that are on the waitlist aren't going to behave any differently than the cohorts of students who started the program. So not everybody on that waitlist is going to decide to come if you say come. And not everybody who starts the program in that waitlist is going to finish the program. So they're going to behave statistically no different than any of other kids who are accepted. So by definition, you're going to lose 12 of your waitlist due to attrition. So those 21 come back in to the mix. And when you bring those 21 back in, you get to 105. You add Bethel, their run rate is 12, which leaves us a gap of 22 to get to the 39. So we know, like I said earlier, we know what we need to do, which is we need to get Bethel in, and then we need to work on where we're getting the other 22 from. And again, we've talked about the number of ways we can get that, but that's how you get to the 139 number. The other view was taking the last year that we just experienced and essentially multiplying it by four, going the other way. Same dynamics, same, same attrition rates. You're starting off with a base of 124, and now to get to the 139, you need 15. So the numbers, what I've experienced is the numbers coming out of Region 14 are some, they are what they are, but there's some discrepancies. There's, you know, a plus one, a plus or a minus one along the way that doesn't line up, what's on the waitlist or information that we're getting. We could chase this for days, for hours, for months. It's the range that I'm particularly most interested in. So I boxed it into 15, call it 15 to 20, additional students that we have to generate one way or another to be able to hit the 139. But I think that's a very fair and even-handed look at what's in front of us without making, I guess, optimistic projections or conclusions about what, what may or may not happen. This is just a very clinical look at where the numbers are. And then we could talk about, you know, and that's where we historically have all been talking about is, can we, do we believe we can fill in that gap? And that conversation is still valid, hasn't changed. But that's, that's what the numbers look like from my viewpoint. Michael.
Thank you. It's, when you lay it out, it definitely, while it's going to require some grit, so thank you, Emily. It seems like it's not a Herculean task, that it's something that we, we could achieve. One of the, one of the questions I had, though, had to do with the attrition rate of 35%. That's specific to Nanawag, correct?
Yeah, those are our sending towns.
Right.
Performance.
It, it just seems very high to me, but I'm wondering if we look at other ag programs around the state, if they have similar attrition rates, or if that is a one-off for some reason at Nanawag? I, I'm not, it just, to me, it just seems like a very high number, which sounds like a negative, but actually, if there is something going on that we could easily tweak to lower that number, then we're addressing at least one of the factors that we need to.
I agree. I, we, I was just talking prior to this meeting about, you know, our ability, whether or not we can influence the attrition rates, because we don't really know right now what's driving those attrition rates. I, you know, Nanawag, I don't want to get inside of Nanawag's head and try to figure out how they're reacting when they're losing students, you know, what they do about that. I'm sure they don't want to lose students, but they are, and we need to understand what they're going through, why they're going through it, you know, what he, I don't know what Bill Davenport does, for example, when students leave, does he, does he conduct an exit interview to find out what the issues were, et cetera, et cetera. We need to get smart on that. And I think it's a good idea to look at other AgSTEM programs in the, in the state to see if there's, if there is a difference. And if there is, what are they doing, you know, assuming they're doing better, what do they do or differently? What are they doing? And what should we be doing here? But the numbers are what they are, and that's really, again, I just wanted to take them just to, they are what they are, and that's our launching point. And if we dig into it and press on some of these things, that's how we're going to fill up that bucket. But that's a good point. Greg? Okay. So with that, I think, Pat, I think it, you know, it's, because the business case that we're aiming for is the 139, right? And just wanted to make sure that the frame of reference as to how we're going to get to 139, what it's going to take, and quite frankly, the risk profile that people are seeing in this, because we've had a lot of conversations, and it's hurt us when we went through the last budget, of people looking at numbers, using the 102, and saying, that's our destiny, and there's nothing we can do about it. And while others hold different opinions. And, you know, without the data, I don't understand how people, you know, well, let's put it this way, if people have different views of the data, we're all going to reach different conclusions and just start, just yelling at each other across the table, and it costs us a budget in part. So, so let's get on with the business case. Bob?
Sure. We've been at this thing for, well, since the referendum days. And basically, what's, a couple of things have happened since we looked at the last model, one of which you'll find on page 10. 10 is a synopsis of what has happened from the referendum through the hard work of the building committee, our efforts up at the state.
Bob, what's?
No, I'm sorry, I have number 10 at the bottom, but it's the referendum question. Mine says 10.
11.
11 for you.
I think you're on 11.
It was, it was redone, I'm sorry.
Oh.
So what has happened is that from the original referendum of 39, 491, we're, we've reduced this, and again, through that effort between the state and the building committee and the professionals working on it, we've reduced it by some $6,619,000. That's our new number for what we're looking to complete both projects. In the matter of the agri-science, it went from 36,5, we're now down to slightly less than $30 million, so almost a six and a half million dollar reduction. That forms the basis for what we would need to finance, because when you start looking further down the grid, or down the pages, if you will, we have received letters that give us an 80% reimbursement rate for eligible costs on this project. Through the review process, ineligible project costs are about $856,000. The project costs eligible for the state reimbursement are $30,606. And you can continue to read the numbers, but the bottom line is, it appears we need $6,977,000 to make this project work for us, or 7 million rounding numbers off. The other thing that's happened since we looked at this project, in the last session of the legislature, they added an additional sum of money to the reimbursement to the receiving districts, that would be us in this case. The way the law is set right now, it took it and added it and made it now $4,200 for every student in that program. So those were the numbers that got changed since we ran the model. Within the model itself, I went back and looked at all the numbers. They seem to be holding percentage-wise for inflation and so forth. There's a slight downward that could be added to this for the operating cost because it's very slight, but I didn't want to upset it because of the slightly smaller square footage that, that is now there. It's, it's not going to make a significant difference. However, I did put in, from the approved budget, the full amount, short, a couple hundred dollars for the director that was carried in the budget, 126 and change. So that's been incorporated into this for the upcoming year. We moved out all the years because we lost the one year. And that, that was the basis, if you will, for our costs that you find on all of the sheets. They don't vary between them. What is varying here is the revenue side of each one of these. I was asked to do various studies between 102 up to 150. And as Anthony pointed out, the one to focus on is the one that's attainable at 139 students. What has happened, we've, we've cut this number down from what we had since we lowered our need for borrowing. And what it shows now at this point is, at the end of the period of time, all things equal on this, there's $186,000 on the negative side over the 20-year period, which is substantially better than what we had looked at previously. Terms of the debt, the finance committee has been looking at this. We brought in people to show us various scenarios. What I chose to use within this is a two-bonded and a ban approach to it. It's not the final answer, it won't be until we have hard numbers, bids in, and we're ready to put it into permanent bonding. But what we looked at was the need to issue bans for the project, then issue a bond issue for $6 million in April of 2019, then issue another bond issue in the year, April of 2020. By that point, we should have our numbers finalized. The AgSTEM portion is, of the borrowings that we need to do, represents about 77.8% of the total. The objective here was to try to get as level funding as we could off of our existing base of debt. And what it did was it created one, I'm going to call it increase, blip upward of $88,750 in the third year. And on the schedule that you were handed out, you could see all the negatives once past that point. All the debt continues to fall off as the principal's paid off and the interest reduces. I used as well the most recent share just so each of the towns could get a sense of where this would go. If no children changed and the percentages remained the same as we just got adopted, that, of course, will change over time, but it'll give them a fair representation of what the debt impact is for each of the towns. So you have a picture now with the latest enhanced revenue in it, the lower need for borrowing based upon the $6 million reduction in the project scope from the beginning. And finally, with the enhanced, the goal of the enhanced revenue, just so everybody understands, because I've been writing letters for I don't know how many years about this in concert with a little bit of prodding from Bill, is to get this to a level that the magnet schools are funded as well. So it has some room to go, but they did enhance it at least this year. There's no guarantees going forward, so I left it flat going forward as well. Anything that changes that, obviously, will probably wipe out that projected deficit at this point. So we were on task, and a few students more, you wipe it out, and you're back to zero again.
I think it's, it's been a lot of discussion, I think, about, about this as well. I know I've had with a number of people in our town. When you look at the models, Bob, you, you projected how much inflation per year on the cost side of the equation?
Well, it varied.
On average?
It averaged probably close to 3.5% over each of the years going out.
So 3%, 3.5% inflation compounded over 20 years on the cost side?
Right, on the cost side, not on the revenue side.
Right. On the revenue side, the original models that you ran assumed the revenue was flat over the 20 years, correct?
It does again, right.
And it does again, only because they just happened to increase.
Correct, but I wanted the most current.
Yes, absolutely. That's why we wanted to do this. I, I certainly can't predict the future any better than anyone else, but I'm pretty sure that over the next 20 years, that tuition line has got to change. I mean, at some point, you know, and...
I'd encourage everybody...
Yes, absolutely, that's why we wanted to do this. I, I certainly can't predict the future any better than anyone else. But I'm pretty sure that over the next twenty years. That tuition line has got to change. I mean, at some point, you know, and.
I'd encourage everybody every year.
Well, I'm, I'm not even.
And, you know, put it in because they listen when you, you approach them, they do listen up to the state.
No, I, I, I think, you know, in, in one respect, I think it was the right thing to do. When you originally ran the model was to keep the tuition side. Flat because. We couldn't control it, but then again, we can't control inflation either, but everybody's certain inflation is going to happen. At some point over the twenty years. Uh, the inflation just, just completely swamps out. Any goodness that you, that you may have, uh, at the beginning, even if you're at your a hundred and thirty nine and. You're running positive. It, it's just math, right? But I, I, I sit back and I wonder, did we do ourselves a disservice by not at some point, even at the ten year mark, taking the tuition up? Even a small amount. You know, but here's where we get into speculation and, and, um, I, I will, I will leave. I will leave it with this is that. Over the twenty years, the state at some point has to make an inflationary adjustment to the tuition line. At some point, the thing is, I don't know when that point will be, we just happen to have one. The next one might not come for another seven years, ten years, or it could be two years. But I just want to point out that our models. Aren't taking liberties and guessing beyond what, what's in front of us. And, and it's, it's a real variable, just as much as if the interest rates go up on the bond before we lock them in, that's going to, that's going to move the model. So will what Hartford does with the tuition line, but I just don't know how to project it.
The other, the other variable that's in this on the cost side is the staff turnover. Every time you have staff turnover, it's going to lower your cost side of this thing and over twenty years. My guess is that'll change as well, but. As you point out, there's a lot of, as the further you get out into this thing, the more unknown there is, but. We took a conservative number on the revenue side. It's very easy to make a case that it's going to go up. And we took a. A fairly moderate look at costs going out without taking a turnover or those kind of things into consideration. It's difficult task.
Michelle.
I, I just wanted to make a couple of comments along the same line. And it holds true whether it's the one oh two or the one thirty nine, you know, all the models, the assumptions are the same. The revenue was held flat, which is conservative, because if you look historically. Over time, it, the, uh, state. Uh, amount of reimbursement has increased, it's gone up and down in little blips, but the, the trend line is up. So that was, was conservative and the operating costs, Bob used a three point five percent. On average, which actually, if you take a look at the business model, it's much more detailed than that, he used six percent for health insurance, two percent for, for. Uh, salaries, you know, it's based on actual historical data. And if you look at our actual budget increases for the last, I think I looked back twenty three years. We averaged three percent, but we used three and a half. So, so, so we went up on the operating costs. We stayed. Level on the revenue, so, so it's a conservative model on both sides. The other thing that. I think should be considered, but was not, and it, it's not necessary for. Looking at the numbers, but when you look at the debt. And you're running it against the operating costs. It's the full nine point five million dollars. But fifteen percent of the students are going to be ours. And so we're, we're actually looking at the income coming from the state and the sending towns to offset. The entire. Debt of building this program, even though fifteen percent of the students in that building will be ours and fifteen percent of that total financed amount is. Is one million, four hundred and thirty eight thousand, so I, I personally feel that. We, we should own that piece, you know, we, we should contribute fifteen percent of building. The building, it shouldn't be all of the state and the sending towns. So if you're actually trying to see at what point. Or at what number. It pays for itself, I would argue that one point four million of that debt. Should be paid by the region twelve because fifteen percent of those kids, at least that's what we're projecting and that's. Based on historical data from Nanowog.
So we're projecting twenty kids. So that, so then you're saying that just, just. Big animal math would be one nineteen, one twenty would be, what you're suggesting. Break even number.
One nineteen.
Just trying to back into how many.
The twenty, the twenty, or the fifteen percent.
Yeah.
Fifteen percent, so we were, we used twenty students. Over the four, let's think, I have to think about this.
Oh, I, I get your point, we don't have to.
Okay, yeah, so, so, so we used, we, we said that twenty students would be ours based on the fact that. When it's the homeschool. You, you, you have an increase in participation. Based on what happens at Nanowog and the other agri-science programs, so.
You're saying is that, is the twenty kids out of a hundred and thirty nine is roughly fifteen percent.
Correct, right.
Right.
And Michelle's argument is that. Is, um. Is that the debt, some of the pro rata share of that debt should, i- if you keep score, it'd be book kept on the Shapag side as opposed to. The Ag side, which is an interesting concept, point, yeah.
Yeah, Bob, I have a question and maybe. Anthony and Pat can chime in or Greg or whoever knows about this. The, the anticipated local contribution, we all know that's that, um, that million dollar donation. Now. I know there were all kinds of stipulations in the letter about how that can be used, and I know obviously it's going to cut costs somewhere. But is there? Is there an understanding of whether that's over and above whatever we have already budgeted to enrich and add? Um, and obviously we had concepts that it wouldn't be used for lumber or something as, as mundane as that. But there's still a concept of is it used as part of the project in there for. Simply reducing the cost of the project? I mean, I guess what I'm asking about is, is what are the logistics of our being able to include this in the math here? Because can it come out of the cost of the project or does it have to come out somewhere else?
It, I, I think Alan. One, we're not going to use it, right, obviously by lumber. Or hay. Yes, no, no, I mean, that's, it's clear, it's not, it's not going to be used to defray operating costs, that's, that's for sure. But to say. Of the, of the existing bond number that we have today, we can point to. A million dollars worth of equipment or something in the building and, and assuming that. The foundation who gifted the money would agree to say, okay, I'll cover that, that expense. We don't know that yet, we're not even sure that's, so it may be something that we haven't even thought about yet, which would then be incremental costs. That we have yet to incur because we haven't thought about it, so I think. Taking it, it's out there, we know it's there, we, we need to figure out how to take advantage of, of the generosity.
Yeah.
But to say that it's going to net against our existing costs, I, I, I don't think we're in a position that we know enough to be able to declare that. But so I, I would, it's a footnote, but I wouldn't.
It's clearly a footnote.
Well, yeah, it is, so I guess that's why what we're really looking at here, what we can safely look at here is. That over twenty years with a hundred and thirty nine students, we're really only in the negative by a hundred and eighty six thousand dollars.
Correct.
It's about, yeah, I mean, if you divide that by twenty, you're talking about.
And that we will get in some way an enrichment to the community in the form of this million dollar contribution, because. Just looking at this, as I said, as a footnote is better because we can't pull it off of operating costs, we can't pull it off of debt.
Right.
So there's really no way of pulling it off of this, it's just there to say it's a little bonus.
Oh.
As much as it's nice to look at net after donation, we really should be looking at the number above it, which really is much smaller than we anticipated.
That would be my recommendation. Michelle.
Well. A loss of one eighty six, assuming we don't contribute anything towards the building of a, of, of a building that. A lot of our students will be benefiting from. Because if you were to. Put back in the one point four million dollars. Because that's right there in the debt column and then it gets moved over. So we would come out ahead if we actually decided we wanted to contribute towards the building.
Well, we are technically contributing towards, taxpayers are paying for all this debt column. And the operating cost column, I mean, we, we still have to.
Well, if you're looking at the net though.
Right, no, we're getting tuition. I mean, that's, that's. Even for our own, even for our own students, we're getting the state portion, the grant comes. You hit the number, that, that's why understanding what that gap is. You know, is really important to be able to figure out, okay, what is, get laser focused on what do we have to do? To go close that gap. Right, and we close that gap and, and. You know, everybody. Everybody's going to come their own probability or thought about, you know, can I close that gap, some people are going to think I could do it in my sleep, others may feel like it's going to. Take a lot of work, but. It's, it's got to be closed, you know, it, you know, can it be closed, how do we close it, that's what we need to go to work on and then this comes true.
But the other thing too is that, I mean, I'm sure you made this clear, but just to reiterate, is that that gap of fifteen to twenty or fifteen to twenty two. Is. Not per year. So we're looking at a gap of four to five kids a year, which is.
No, it's, it's total enrollment, it's per year. You need to have a hundred and thirty nine. We're, we're going to have to. Yeah, unfortunately, we're going to have to pause so we can flip the CD.
Right, which means that if it's over four years, you always are bringing new kids in freshman year each year.
Hang on Alan.
Okay. All right, I just thought this was.
No talking.
Not necessary for public consumption, me once again trying to do maths. I'm just chatting, remember the net gross conversation?
Yes, I do.
Yeah. Well, no, because I. Right. So the gap.
But over four classes.
Right. And you supposedly, all right, all right, right. My remedial math training will have to be on camera, fine. All right, we're good.
One of the questions that I had. It had to do, maybe Bob can answer this on the, the, why he estimated a. Three point five percent inflation rate, because if you look at the, at the, the actual cost of living increase, if you look at the value of a dollar. Twenty years ago compared to twenty seventeen, you know, nineteen ninety eight to twenty seventeen. The, the increase was, was. Fifty cents, so it was fifty percent over twenty years. And here we, and here Bob is, is projecting a two hundred and thirty percent increase over twenty years. So all you'd have to do is have that. Not be two hundred and twenty, but be a hundred and ninety or, or a hundred and eighty. And only be three times the rate of inflation. And what do you get to, you get to no gap at all on those numbers. So you see, it, a lot of this is based on assumptions. And if you, if, if you always assume the worst case. And assume that nothing will work. We'd still be living in caves because no one would have built the first house. I, I mean, at some point in time, you have to look at these numbers and say, look, we, we, we feel that we've made an extraordinarily conservative analysis. By having an inflation rate that is three, two, two point three times the, the actual inflation rate. What you see in society and in the United States in general. And we haven't increased revenue at all. And at the end of the day, we come out basically even with our model number. And that, and that really is, you know, the, what I take away from the numbers, am I wrong? Am I missing something?
Well, no, I mean, in. It's, it's, you're talking about sensitivity. And the model's got a number of different variables in which it's sensitive to, and inflation is one of them. The tuition rate is, is another one. The interest rate is another one, we'll lock in the interest rate soon, but you know, that's about the only one that we can really control. And then, of course, it's the number of students that we attract into the program, right? So it's, um. It's a, it's a simultaneous equation and they're really tough to solve.
And we tried to take a conservative approach to it so that we didn't, we weren't trying to be overly optimistic and say there's no inflation and. We're going to get.
Well, that wouldn't be right.
So we, we took a conservative approach to this thing.
John.
You're going to have to forgive me, but I'm going to throw in a couple more variables. On, on the revenue side, that you have the state grant, which this year happens to be appropriation with her, excuse me, I have Anthony's voice. Forty two hundred.
Projecting.
And, um. That. Was a thousand dollar bump, probably the highest bump in the, um, in the, in the appropriations. Ever. The other problem is that number can be reduced, I think. The legislature appropriates a specific amount and that amount is divided. By the number of students participating in the ASTI program. One thing I learned, I'm saying, how could it have jumped a thousand dollars? Well. That appropriation is not necessarily what is always allocated. These, um, the ASTI payments are. Allocated quarterly and, um. Sometimes the state. Shifts money from. Priority programs, mostly in the special education program. And what happens is. There isn't enough money to make the fourth quarter payment for the ASTI, are you familiar with that?
I've seen situations where that's the case, I've seen. Situations where they actually had money left and they gave an increase over what they were supposed to.
That's right, that, that hasn't happened.
I've seen both sides of it.
The last time they, they increased it was sixty dollars in twenty fourteen, twenty fifteen. Over the last three years. They allocated thirty two hundred, but last year. They appropriate, they appropriated thirty two hundred, but, but last year the allocation was twenty eight sixteen. So that was a reduction of four hundred dollars. So I'm just saying, you know, yeah, over time. The. The appropriation could go up, but there's no guarantee. Sometimes it's, it's, it's whether or not the state fiscally can deliver.
John, I'd, I'd agree with you because in these last three years. Things have happened at that state. Where statutorily, they're not necessarily following what's on the book, some. They stray off and increase where there, there's no explanation for it. In other cases, they completely wiped out money, but then restored it the following year.
I, I think we should probably get somebody from the Grant Bureau, I think, they call it the Grant Bureau?
Well, who's left up there, yeah, like every other department, it's kind of been decimated over time.
Yeah, I mean, I think to go into this projecting twenty years down the road. When that number is so variable is, is a mistake.
Um, now, remind me, I know there's a split cost here, the state. A Shapag student going into the AgSTEM program. The state still pays region twelve that money.
Correct.
Okay, so we, let's say we have a hundred and thirty nine kids. And let's say they lop it from thirty two hundred to tw- to twenty eight hundred. That means we're going to lose fifty five thousand dollars that year. I think we can afford that, I don't think this is a variable that we need to worry about. Fifty five thousand times twenty two years, if, if they lop off money every single year, which they also don't do. Is one point two million, once again, you know. It's a big number, but it's over twenty two years and we're getting a lot of benefit for this risk. So you're right, that's a variable to be concerned about, but not too concerned because. It's fifty five thousand dollars a year, as you said, if it's four hundred, now, there haven't, there have probably been times when they've lopped off a thousand. Or there's been times when they've lopped off sixty and there's been times when they've added some. So that will all shift around, so maybe we'll look at an average of four hundred, as I said, we, we're getting into the weeds with worry sometimes, I think, you know?
Sure.
Well, and if you look at the actual numbers that you're looking at, the overall trend over time is up. So I think holding flat. Is, is. About as safe as you can go, I mean, we could, we could predict that it would go down every year, but that's not what historical data shows. but that's not what historical data shows. It will go down some years, but over 20 years, it, it ought to increase if it holds true to history, and at the very worst, over 20 years, will hold steady. So I, I think, I, I think the prediction, or that what we've used for the model is, is a reasonable choice based on the fact that historically it goes up.
Yes, historically, it's the first time it's ever been 4,200, and you're predicting that out 20 years.
I'm predicting that it won't go down from there 20...
It will.
It will go up and down like it has over 20 years.
But you compound that with the, with the variable enrollment, you've got some, some revenue problems.
Does anybody know what it was 20 years ago?
The state grant?
Yeah.
No, there is a site, though, you can determine it, you can historically take a look, I'll...
Well, I'm just wondering, I mean, it's, over the last 20 years, it's gone up considerably. So we could, and we never want to assume, but we can assume it's, it's... Oh, yeah, what was it? 249. So in other words, there's, there's, you know, the trend is up, and then there's fluctuations as to whether they pull any back every year, but those are fluctuations as opposed to, you know, real sawtoothing. As I said, I really think that, you know, of all the things to worry about, this is one thing we don't have to worry about, and even, well, anyway.
Okay, were there any other comments, questions, Jim?
Yeah, Bob, on this debt sheet, the town, each town's share, you said you used, I think, from this past year's budget, is that right?
Correct.
And that each town's share is determined by their student population, I assume?
That's correct.
Does the town's student population include tuition in students?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so, no further questions? We could move on, on the update, on the AgSTEM program. Thank you, Pat, Bob, for, for the work done. And, oh, I thought we were going to executive, yeah, yeah. Okay, the next one is to consider, and if appropriate, approve the request for the Houston Valley Association to use the Washington Primary School for their 28th Annual Auction to benefit the environment on Sunday, November 18, 2018. Waiving the policy prohibiting alcoholic beverages, with the provision alcohol must not be served while students are on campus and insurance to be provided.
Second.
Thanks, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passed unanimously.
Anthony?
Jim?
Before we, I know the next item on the agenda is the executive session. I'd like to say something before we go into executive session. I know there's no new business on the agenda, but just briefly, I think it's appropriate while we're in public session. Dr. Cosentino told us tonight that this is her last meeting, Board of Education meeting. It's my understanding her last day of employment is with the region is June 30, thereabouts. I would just like to say that this is Dr. Cosentino's first superintendency. It was a new experience for her. She made, in my estimation, some difficult decisions while she was here, for example, recommending to the board the end of block scheduling, the alignment of the middle and high school. Most, if not all, have been very successful. For example, Ms. Kalala's report tonight on the success of the multi-grade experience for which some people had expressed significant reservations. Pat's interest in rigor in our curriculum, and her practice of always making decisions as superintendent on what is in the best interest of the kids, and her mantra to practice an attitude of gratitude are perspectives that have had significant benefit to Region 12. I want to thank Dr. Cosentino for her hard work and dedication to the interests of Region 12, and I'm sure that we all wish her the best in her next position. Thank you, Dr. Cosentino.
Since, since you brought it up, is, are there any other comments before we break? Thank you.
Will we go into executive session to discuss non-certified staff 2018-19 salaries and contracts, and to consider the request of Region 12 Administration to expel a Shippawg Valley school student and possible action?
You have a motion?
That's a motion.
Oh, sorry, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right, we're in executive session at 9:18? Yes.